All right, everyone, I'm seeing the clock at 6:00 PM, ready to begin. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 10th regular Delray Oaks Planning Commission meeting. Karen, will you do roll call, please?
Commissioner Berger?
Was that a yes?
Thank you.
He said yeah. You're muted, Mike.
You're muted, Mike.
I'm here.
Okay.
I'm under SAB, which is my wife's computer. Sorry for the confusion.
Commissioner Wood? You're muted.
Here.
Commissioner Burton? Well, I see him there. Commissioner Krieger?
Here.
Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Here.
Commissioner Hayworth?
Here.
Chairman Howlick?
Here.
Thank you, Karen. And now if you'll all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number three on our consent agenda is, item A is to adopt the January 13th, 2021 Planning Commission minutes. So we'll take moments to review if we haven't already, and I'll entertain a motion to do so.
My motion, we accept the minutes from the January 13th meeting as submitted.
Second. Hello's in favor?
Hi.
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 And number four on the agenda, now we will entertain public comments. Anyone wishing to address the Commission on matters not appearing on the agenda may do so now. The public may comment on any other matter listed on the agenda at the time the matter is being considered by the Commission. There will be a time limit, if not more than three minutes, for each speaker, and no action will be taken by the Commission on matters brought up under this item, and all comments will be referred to staff. And...
I don't see any hands.
I am seeing none. I will confirm with our tech support, seeing none. Therefore, we will move on to item number six, which is old business, of which we have none. Item number seven, new item, or new business. 7A is the 2020 General Plan Annual Progress Report. So just to briefly describe, our goal this evening, hopefully, is to approve the General Plan Annual Progress Report Implementation Status and Analysis Documents. We have a, well, first of all, this is, this is a statutory and required document submitted to agencies of the state each year. It's important to note that we are drawing from previous documents circa 2019. Given COVID restrictions, budget mental restrictions and such, not much has changed, if anything, in the crafting of this document. So it has been, the consensus has been that the 2019 document would be carried forward. It has subsequently been approved, adopted by the City Council as of June of 2020. It's received much public input, interaction, and review through both Planning Commission meetings, City Council meetings, and tonight, we have, we are happy to receive Denise Duffy and Associates, who will be providing us with a presentation as to how the process will proceed. And at this time, I will introduce Denise Duffy herself, if you please.
Thank you, Chair Howlick. I don't know if Jeff, City Manager, would like to have any forwarding remarks, otherwise I could begin.
Just a procedural one, Chair and Denise. The Commissioners received a copy of that 2019, or the 2019 original document. It was not published with the packet. That document was made available publicly here in City Hall, and it is available for people to review. That's all. Denise, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, thank you for that clarification. Randy, do you think you can allow me to share my screen to your share screen?
You should be able to.
Is it working? Let me see.
George Hill.
Is that right?
Yep. There you go.
Thank you. I've just admitted someone to the waiting room, Randy. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you, Planning Commissioners. My name is Denise Duffy. I've been the planning consultant for this city of Delray Oaks for many years. And as reported by Chair and Acting City Manager Jeff Point, this is an annual reporting requirement. It is something that's used, developed, required for both two jurisdictions. One state jurisdiction called the Office of Planning and Research, and the second jurisdiction, the Housing and Community Development Department, both run at the state. And there are two different reports with two different formats. This, we're talking about the General Plan Annual Progress Report and the Housing Element Annual Progress Report. The Housing Element is a component of the General Plan. Simply put, the state wants the city to report on how much progress you've made in the last reporting year on implementing the policies of your general plan and your housing element policies of your general plan. They really would like to monitor and understand what progress you've made in development of affordable housing, quite frankly, is one primary element. And so to do that, they have identified and adopted state statutes that say, report every year on what progress you've made last year on your implementation of your general plan. Just as a precursor, the city of Delray Oaks is in a really unique situation. It has an older general plan, number one, that the policies haven't changed in a few decades for the general plan for most of the housing, all of the other elements, but the exception of housing. The other distinction is that, as was reported, there was a very comprehensive review last year by the City Council. They adopted a General Plan Annual Progress Report after going through each of the individual policies with the Planning Commission as well, over three or four different hearings. It doesn't mean you can't, you know, look at this all again, but our suggestion was, well, since it was just done, and it was done because of COVID, it wasn't done in the early part of 2020, and it was done and adopted and sent in July of 2020, you haven't really changed that much in the progress of it. Yeah, what have you done in your 2020 for implementation of the general plan policies? And number two, the policies haven't changed for a few decades, so there is sort of a limited amount to report. And so for two reasons, one economically, rather than going through the whole process again, we suggest just use a portion as an attachment to this report, use the 2020 report that was provided. It's still, it's not that we're just using that report. The report that you have in your packet that was provided with you, not as the attachment, is actually the annual progress report. So what you read, you can't see me, but I'm holding up the annual progress report that's dated March 10th, 2021. It was in your progress reports, a three pager. That is actually the report you submitted to APR, to HCD. So I'm just going to go through some slides briefly and try and, you know, sort of identify really what the next steps are, what the purpose is. You can stop me as much as you want, if you'd like, or you can wait for questions for the end. The purpose is for an annual progress report is to review any progress you've made in meeting your regional housing needs for providing affordable housing, and particularly into your regional housing needs assessment. Have you created any new housing units that are affordable that you can report to OPR and HCD, those two state agencies? Have you removed any governmental constraints to the development of housing by making changes to your general plan, by rezoning, by any of those really focused elements of which the city has not in this last reporting period? So you're really reporting on those progress elements as to what's changed. And then the Planning Commission requirements under, the Planning Commission is required to simply review the document and then report to the City Council. Do you feel it's appropriate to sum this up as your report to OPR and HCD, Office of Planning and Research, and Housing and Community Development? The City Council will actually adopt a resolution and send it on. You're not approving the report as much as you're just saying it's ready to get submitted. The general plan history is important. I think most of the planning commissioners who have been here before have seen this through our housing element process and last year's reporting. But I think it's important to review. The full comprehensive, last time the city of Delray Oaks has prepared a comprehensive general plan with all the policies is in 1988. The 1997 update was focused on former four-door property. So it was focused on adding policies to the general plan that are focused and specific to former four-door. So we have a current general plan from 1998 with those policies and programs, and then also incorporating the 1997 general plan update, which really involved properties on the former four-door, implementing what was the old FORA policies onto that. But the city has done comprehensive reviews of each of the policies and programs of the city general plan, even though they're older in a number of times over the years. The one that we're most specifically involved with, in 2016, 2017, we had five or six Planning Commission hearings just going through each of the different specific policies of the general plan. Some of you may have even been there. And then that was then reported to the City Council. They adopted that and moved it on. So we had a very comprehensive look at each of the individual policies. How is it that we're doing? What are we doing? And have we made any progress? And what do these look like now? The interesting thing about that comprehensive review, there are a number of policies that are the basic values of the city of Delray Oaks that really haven't changed even over since 1988 in terms of preservation of oak trees, community, things like that. So I think that was really important to report and to have everyone understand. The next comprehensive review of the housing element was, we had a 1992 housing element up until last year, December 2019. So all of the housing element was completely updated in 2019, December, and new policies were adopted for the housing element. So that was a great progress. Then in 2020, even with COVID and everything that was going on, the city actually conducted a really comprehensive review of the general plan policies and had about three or four public hearings in May or June, and then that was the report that was sent on to HCD and OPR. And again, that focused on what progress has the city made on these policies and programs that are implementing the general plan. So the objective of this report is to, again, report on progress made since last reporting. Last reporting was submitted in July 2020. So although that was a comprehensive review, this reporting period is from January 2020 through December 2020, but the reporting actually was conducted in July, so we've really kind of had about a six-month reprieve or more in the sense of, most of the work has already been done. There hasn't been any changes. This is really about trying to report on, do you have any major developments? Do you have any new rezonings? Do you have more affordable housing? The city is in a unique position because of its small size and not having made progress in terms of doing a lot of new development or wanting, at this point, to being able to because of water constraints, that there aren't a lot of changes or any changes. So this report is focused on the progress supposed to be made, focused on progress made in implementing policies in the general plan since last reporting period, and essentially, there has been very little or no progress made other than the housing element progress that was made last year. And that's what the report says. If you read it, it also talks generally about what we're doing with the housing element and what we want to do in the future, which you can talk about. So the body of report attached to the staff report is essentially the general plan update, annual report update. It is four pages. It can be as short or as long as you want it to be. What we decided to do is make at least three or four pages and then attach the last year's report that was adopted, given the recent approach that was used for that. And also, since no major changes on reporting is needed for last year, 2020. I think it's interesting to note that the city has done a really good job. Last year, according to HCD and OPR, we just did a seminar with them earlier today. I think they said less than 40, but less than 50% of cities completed the general plan APR last year, and they weren't able to submit to this report. So the city of Delray Oaks really moved through this and comprehensively looked at it last year. Many, many of the cities did not even report progress, or there is no, there's no penalty for not reporting the annual general plan progress report to OPR. I think that's why probably cities did not go ahead and do that. And I think the city should be, you know, still knowledgeable that they did conduct a comprehensive review and conducted the public hearings last year, and you're conducting one again today, and you may want to decide to hold this over and do more tonight, after tonight, except to the City Planning Commission. In addition to the general plan progress, you report on the housing element progress that's been made, influencing any policies toward the housing element. Currently, that actually is an Excel spreadsheet that HCD prepares and we fill out, and that needs to be submitted by April 1st of each year. It basically is numerical. How many units did you create? New affordable units? How many new areas did you rezone? Very specific sections that I'll show you. So it is not specific to a small city like Delray Oaks that doesn't have the same, you know, large projects, large geographic area, and many, many projects that may come through that create affordable housing and not without having the water constraints. So the focus is really identifying new units created in the format required by HCD, Housing and Community Development. So here's a few of the charts that we filled out for this year's format. Essentially, you can see that it identifies how many building permits under the affordable category. And in this year, we can identify that there is one ADU that was created, accessory dwelling unit, within what the Housing and Community Development considered an affordable category. So the city has created one ADU. I know we'll be also coming for, before the Planning Commission with the workshop on ADUs coming up in April. We'll talk about more ADU creation and ADU ordinance, which is what the housing element policy. But for right now, most of these numerical Excel spreadsheets are coming up with zero. There's no new units created, no rehab, no rezoning, no new lands created, no new development, no new major applications or applications for affordable housing, and that's essentially what gets reported to HCD on April 1st by the city. We also look at, you know, regional housing needs allocation process, and the RENA, Regional Housing Needs Allocation, shows that we have, again, created one ADU in the city during 2020. And it was processed under the state ADU ordinance. And it's very clear the city is limited in its ability to create a lot of major affordable housing project without new land. So the housing element last year identified sites suitable for future housing through the 2021 housing update process will be looking at those properties that could be suitable for development, available lands to be able to put the RENA on, regional housing needs on. And that's going to be going before the Planning Commission, City Council workshops coming up in June, just to give you a little heads up. And then we also identify what the current policies are. The policies were adopted in 2019. And essentially, what our status program table says is, what we're working on is this 2021 update for the fifth cycle. That essentially is the process and the program for the housing element and annual progress report for the general plan. Right now, I would suggest that I'm open to any questions. Just what would be happening if you choose to is, after the close of public comments and questions, the Planning Commission may consider whatever next steps they want to take. There is no time limit for the annual progress report for the general plan that you've received tonight. You may continue the consideration to talk about it more. You can request more information, set aside whatever you want time for that, or you can move to send it to City Council after you deliberate. Again, there's no penalties for extensions for submittal of the annual progress report for the general plan reporting. So that closes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. And so at this time, at Denise Duffy and Associates' invitation, we will open it up to public questions and comments. Electronically, I am not seeing any. If anyone is having trouble raising their hand virtually, wave at the screen. Still seeing none. Then we'll continue and go out to Planning Commissioners, questions and comments. I'll begin with Vice Chairman Hayworth.
About that, I really don't have anything. You know, if nothing's changed, nothing's changed, so yeah, I'm okay.
Very well, moving on to Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Burton, any comments?
Doug, you're muted.
Can you, yep, I think so. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry for not having video for this round. And we'll just chalk that up to experience. Should be able to prevent that in the future one. So I'm on my phone going through and watching all of you guys on the video, but I don't have video for myself. I went through this report, and my comment is about what the Planning Commission's role is in this and how we should think about moving forward with this. And I'll tell you, I went through and I highlighted, Ms. Duffy, thank you for going through and providing this detail, but I went through and highlighted all of the places that the Planning Commission has said that we're taking a role or that we're intending to take a role. And I just, most of the time, I just highlighted every time the Planning Commission was cited in here. And I will tell you that I think it would be appropriate for someone, and I'm willing to help, to go through and kind of make a checklist for the Planning Commission to make sure that we're doing the absolute best job that we can for the public. And by the public, I mean our fellow, our neighbors. As we, you know, all of these things we're reporting that we're saying we're doing, well, we do those. You know, I didn't have a single item where I thought, you know, I don't know that we're doing that at all. Because I think we do every one of these that Denise Duffy has pointed out in this in this review of our general plan. That said, I think we can be a little more deliberate in how we approach some of these things, and I'm happy to offer even as much as a checklist. Some of you may know me as a helicopter pilot and a Navy aviator. Well, I'll tell you, along with that comes checklist to make sure, simple things like the landing gear down before you actually get to the runway. So without all that, I think we're doing a good job. I don't have any specific, I disagree with what's said in this update, but I will tell you, I think we can learn from it and do better. And that's more of a comment to you, Denise, or to the City Council folks that have dialed in. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Well, I agree with Doug. I think we're doing a decent job when something comes along that the Planning Commission is involved with, that we do our job. So, and doesn't seem like too much has changed, and I think we should move it on to City Council.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Shaw, and Commissioner Krieger, please.
All right, hello. Well, I'm going to kind of follow up with Commissioner Burton a little bit. My first thought was, coming out of the staff report, first, my apologies to everyone for hitting the reply off. I have proven yet again that we truly cannot multitask, and my apologies when I emailed Karen the day I was trying, the link wasn't clickable, and I was trying to find all the, what was, I thought was listed. I wasn't sure I was finding everything, and so I wanted to get a confirmation from Karen or a link to it. And apologies for hitting the play off. I will definitely slow down next time and not try to do three things at one time. Okay, so in that last, and Denise sort of addresses, and Commissioner Burton brought it up, but the last item says consideration for Planning Commission, it says, consider action. Well, let's do April 1st, and my first thought was, there's no time for action. My thought was, last month might have been a great month to do this. We did not have a meeting. It would have been a great time to devote the meeting to really digging into this. And so just something to think about in the future. You know, we have these months where we don't do anything. If we can put stuff like this on those ones, that'd be great. Now Denise addressed the fact that it could be late, so I guess that we do have time actually to do action if we needed it. I don't know that we really do. I agree, it's been, not a lot's happened. The one thing, just an add to the thing, I'll just make a pitch, if we could perhaps save the, instead of scanning, printing and scanning our things to PDF, if we could save them to PDF from our, from the application, whether we're using Word or whatever it is we're doing, then we could at least cut and paste the links into the browser, just something to think about. Okay, in the report itself, thank you for bearing with me. In the report itself, in paragraph two, it's in the background, it's still referencing that we're going to do this in conformity with a four-door reuse plan. And I just was curious, because I thought that at one of the meetings somewhere, they had said the four-door reuse plan was known for, that four is going, so I just maybe was looking for a clarification on that. Are we still working towards that, or is that something? That was, that was one question I had. And at the end of the background, again, in paragraph two, we're talking about the housing element, and this got really interesting, I'm sure, for all of us, because we're talking in 19, in the report, in middle of 2020, and we're going to do hearings in 2021. It was, I had to read this a few times to get the timeline down. But in that housing, adopted housing element, it talks about, the city is working to update the adopted 2019 the city is working to update the adopted 2019 housing element. I know we sent that in December of 19, and I know a few months later, I think maybe in March timeframe, the state came back and said it wasn't compliant. And I haven't heard any more about that. So I don't is our housing elements that we submitted still out of compliance? Because my question then is here we say we're trying to update it. I assume that is trying to get it into compliance. And then in paragraph four, we say that we're going to implement it. So are we implementing it? Are we trying to get it in compliance? Are we doing both? It's so it's a little unclear to me. Maybe a little clarification might 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 help. Because as I'm going through, I'm not sure what where we're at in this process. If we're trying to get compliant and implement at the same time, that I'm just curious. So that was one thing. Down to bottom of paragraph four, I think that March 2020 date for public hearings, I probably is March 2021. I would imagine. And already talked about the clickable links. Yeah, so that was really my thing. I was just a little confused about the the housing element timeline and where we are. And I'll make one last pitch down at the bottom of paragraph three. It's talking about general plan implementations. It talks about we need to address traffic, water, potential future development. I'll just put my picture for climate change as well. That's part of the safety element and it's nowhere listed, which is because that element of our general plan was written in 1988. And I don't think hard that anyone even knew what climate change was in 1988. But as we go forward, I think it's important that we not that's going to become more and more critical as we forward. So yeah, thank you very much. That's all I had.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger. And Ms. Duffy, would you like to address the couple of questions on the table before we move on?
Sure. Thank you. That's a lot easier to do it more immediately. In terms of Commissioner Burton, in terms of thank you for your broad and specific review of the individual policies. I think it's really interesting that and very beneficial that you want to go forward and look to see that the planning commission is doing what it's stated it was going to be doing last year. I just want to remind everybody that this is a document that is 2020. This is what's already happened. So it was it's a great idea to go through and say what responsibilities are. But this document is about in 2020, this is what the planning commission did as part of its specific roles and responsibilities for implementing implemented the general plan. That doesn't preclude going forward and doing the specific review that Commissioner Burton discussed, which I think is really beneficial. In terms of the staff report from Commissioner Krieger, thank you for pointing it out. The link was not workable. We're sorry about that. That really was something that's just on, I'm sure on something that can get worked out and hopefully everybody did receive the packet and and we'll go from there. Considering the action, I'm trying to remember saving to PDF, I'll defer to the city on that. Yet we can definitely consider this action earlier. There is no deadline for APRs and with COVID etc. And everybody's business level, we did not put this in the February, we put it in the March. But as I did stand in the PowerPoint, feel free to pass this on or or hold on to it. There's no deadline requirement. And but we will put that calendar for next year in February per your request. In terms of the Fort Ord reference on page one, I think if you read that carefully, you'll understand that that reference is to what happened. At that time, they adopted a general plan, a form of Ford ord. And that was the that was the underlying, overlying policy document and the framework for the general plan within that area. And that specifically states that it's the city at that time declared its intent to develop the property and general plan update in conformity with a form of Ford ord. That was what loser prior and that's still current today. So it is correct. The city plans to consider the second item in the second full paragraph. I state this city plans to consider the housing element in a joint session of planning commission council. We heard by June 2021, that's in the city councils, the housing element vision. And it is planned, the both the leap and the reef grants were granted to the city to pay for the housing element update. The housing element, like many jurisdictions in California, is not considered compliant, but it is your valid housing element. It's just not deemed compliant by HCD because we got a lawsuit from Landwatch. And they sued the city if we were to adopt a rezoning at the same time, they were threatened to sue. So the city in its wisdom tried to get out of doing that prior to adopting the housing element. And then the HCD's in full recognition, knew that we're the city is going to get sued. And they so the city adopted the housing element first one in 20 years. And we recognize that we're going to get a letter saying, hey, you need to do the rezoning in order to get fully compliant, which is what's happening in 2021. So there's actually a full housing element update. And the interesting and exciting part for the planning commission is they get to have hearings, discussions, workshops about that, looking at current housing element policy and seeing what works and what doesn't, and having a little bit more time to go through what those policies are and what the city's planning commission and city council vision is for that moving forward. And I think that answers that question. And then thank you for the error that we made for the 2020. It should be 2021. Thanks for catching that. And let me see if that covers everything. For implementation, you had a question about.
No, I think I think these, I think you answered it. I my question was just at one point we talked about updating and then another part we talked about implementing. But I think if I understand what you're saying is yes, it was submitted, that's current. We knew this date was going to call it noncompliant. We're going to try to fix all that with the upcoming joint meeting. Is that 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 I kind of get?
Specifically, you have a housing element with policies and programs to be implemented.
Right, no.
So that's why this is this is current. And you need to be able to show you're implementing those programs and policies. The only thing that we haven't done is rezoning. Yeah. And so of course, so it's again, we're going to be covering that in 2021. And you'll get an opportunity to talk about it again.
And that's the joint session we have coming up.
A joint session. And then my my plan is managing this process again is also to have separate. You're as a planning commission or the recommending body to the city council for this document, which is and the ordinances, you know, an ADU ordinance, anything that's a zoning ordinance or amendment or a general plan amendment, which a housing element amends the general plan as a component of that general plan. The planning commission is the recommending body. They are the they're the body that reviews it and then moves it up to the city council. So your job is, you know, want to be going through 2021 and looking at everything that comes through. We got a housing policy and any zoning ordinance amendments and ADU ordinances, things like that. I was I plan on providing just as an informational document, sort of a calendar of things that are coming up for the planning commission and the next, you know, calendar year 2021 to give you some opportunity to review and see what's moving forward and then make sure your calendar can can manage that.
Thank you, Ms. Duffy. We look forward to all the forthcoming supplementary information. And now we'll move to Commissioner Woods.
Hello, thank you. Yeah, I'm looking forward. Thank you. Douglas for wanting to look through this with a fine tooth comb and a later date. I think that's a really good idea. So I'm all on board for that, but I think we should just approve this document as is with the one change. That's my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood, and we'll finish with Commissioner Berger.
Thank you very much for the presentation and information. I don't have anything to add at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Berger. And I would concur and thank you, Ms. Duffy, Denise Duffy and Associates for a very thorough and detailed presentation. I feel as though we're seeing this, understanding this of the work of yesteryear. Again, as which has been reviewed through multiple planning commission meetings, city council meetings, adopted subsequently, received great public input and exposure. And I too am steering towards approving adopting of the general plan annual or the annual progress report, the APR. And ready to entertain a motion at this time.
Chair, if I can, pardon me, Commissioner Jack Shaw, if I can, just address something really quick that was brought up.
Mr. City Manager, go ahead.
Just when it comes to the links, those will be fixed. Everything will be clickable in the future just for the commission and the public. We switch the people who are handling that and the the selection of whether or not the link should be a hyperlink or not was not, you know, clicked on on that on, you know, when when we've been printing up some of these packets. But we figured it out and I just wanted to make that clear before it gets forgotten. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. And to reiterate what City Manager had mentioned before, we received the grid that were the document that we're referring to a bit later than we were able to get it into the packet for the public's pleasure. And again, that is available to view at City Hall in the public record, the planning commission's file. And for any other questions, any details, as you can see, the information we've been given in the packet, you can refer to our recorded planning commission and city council meetings via the city website. And so with no further discussion, I move that we pass this on to the city council with the corrections made.
I second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously. So we're moving on to item 7B at this time. Before we do, while we're getting into the building projects juncture of our of our agenda, I'd like to back up, try to catch myself if I may. I skipped over item number five, building reports. If we could just briefly review, if you haven't already, our building activity report for February 2021. And I'll intend entertain an immediate motion to approve as such.
I'm happy to see there's some activity going on. Last year we had some pretty short lists, but if nobody else has any further comments, I move that we adopted as submitted.
I just. I have a second. All those in favor?
I think Michael had a question.
And this doesn't change votes or anything like I apologize. I'm out of turn here. I just see on third line down that our name is still on this and we've completed our project. I don't know if that's has any relevance whatsoever.
We just probably haven't caught up with your final inspection. So we'll.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner, Vice Chair Hayworth has a first and Commissioner Jack Shaw has offered a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And item number five, the building report, activity report is accepted. And now returning to new business, item 7B. We are seeing once again our representatives, owners of Delray Oaks Legacy Farms. Pardon me, Delray Oaks Legacy Incorporated, which is Delray Farms. And this evening we are we're doing an architectural review once again and requesting approval for new business signs on exterior of the building at 800 Portola Drive. Just a quick review. The tell us where we're at right now. The the signs have been permitted a bit prematurely. There was mild misunderstanding, perhaps that in our review of the architectural components the last time that the applicant visited, that the signs were inclusive. They were not. They are already installed. I'm sure we've all all seen them. So that's where we are now. I'll begin if I may. Again, we appreciate what you've done with the with the property. It's an overall improvement. The shutters are looking great, the landscaping as well. The also the signs have been deemed compliant in square footage in proportion to building frontage. Number of signs, the planning commission is seeing the the project as is as completely compliant. It looks great. Eager to see the the stone clad, the flagstone facade go up also, but we're doing great. And it's so actually that was a bit premature. I should invite the applicant to step forth and.
I believe both Larry and I are present, so I can begin speaking if if that's okay. Yeah, thank you for your comments in regards to the changes, the facade changes that have been done thus far. Yeah, I'm sorry about the confusion with the signs. We had been communicating with the city in regards to that, but weren't aware that we needed to speak specifically on it in the planning commission meeting. And then had spoken to the city or the sign company had gotten approval from the city. But again, there was a we weren't aware that it would, we needed to do a formal planning commission meeting. So sorry about that. There is one sign that is yet to be put up. It was submitted with the in the planning commission application. And that is because we are waiting for the stone facade, which is the next phase of the project to be completed. Once the stone facade is up, then it will be able to be mounted as it will be sitting on top of the stone facade on the side of the building where the customer entrance is where the park, the parking lot side of the building, that's the one sign that is yet to be installed.
All right. Thank you. I've given my two cents on the project. We will move on to other planning commissioners' comments. Vice Chairman Hayworth.
Yeah, thank you. You know, part of the our ordinance says that they are to submit scale drawings, color boards, examples, etc., etc., you know, size, shape and all that. And I don't know that we ever got that. So with what you do for a living, Jeremy, I'm going to accept that they're in compliance. I just want to make sure that that's the case because I don't want this to come back on us.
Yes, I'll comment to that effect. We are our current sign ordinance is in developmental stages. And we are referring to our eldest effective sign ordinance. Where I'm seeing this is as a wall sign on any building or structure, in this case commercial. 1.5 square feet is allowable per every 100 square feet of building frontage, which they are well within. And there can be no protrusion beyond 12 inches. So they are again compliant there. So just for the consideration of the planning commission. Moving on to Commissioner Jack Shaw.
Yes, Denise and I, when we drove around to look at the various projects, looked at that and it looks very nice. We're very happy with it. But we sort of looked at it and go, do they sell produce? You know, there's no indication that what kind of businesses is, you know, all the other businesses that are in that business have a green cross. Is there any plans to advertise that or what? That's my our question or my question.
I'll I'll go ahead and and speak to Commissioner Jack Shaw. This is Lawrence Michelson. I don't know if you guys can hear me or not.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, yeah, we traditionally, I know, I I I've been in the business for about a decade now, for 10 years. And we've always had a green cross. And, you know, we wanted to maybe put a little bit of a different image on the front entryway of Delray and make it kind of a little bit more of a kind of a classier establishment where it's not like all the places that just have a green cross. And, you know, make it look like, you know, the the confusion is, you know, today this is a recreational business. I know five years ago. I know five years ago, it was a very medical facing business. We do still serve a huge portion of the community that needs it for medical purposes, but we wanted to give it a little bit more of a recreational feel and make the customers kind of, you know, I would say not be shy that they're at a pharmacy or something of that nature and and kind of try something different, not having a cross. We've, we've done this at several of our other stores and the neighborhood seemed to take pretty well. It also has our website, Enjoy Delray Farms. So if somebody was curious what it was, they'd be able to see our entire menu right on their phone. And also as far as sales for the community and the taxes, since the opening of the store, I believe the numbers are probably right where where the previous business was without the green cross. So we're really hoping that we can continue to drive the traffic with the new branding, the new products and the the new management that's in place. We've had really positive feedback from the community and we've definitely made it a place that has more product than any other store, probably in the state of California. So I think it's a really good addition to the city for both purposes, medical and recreational.
Well, I agree. The signage looks very nice. I'm very happy with it. I just didn't want to lose out on any possible customers that, you know, would drive by and not know what it is, but it seems like you're plugging along normal, so that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, Gary is absolutely right. We haven't seen any drop in business in comparison to what we were doing under the old name with the cross and where it seems that week over week, we're progressing at about a 2% to 3% increase week over week. So we hope to see it continue.
Good.
So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. All good news. And moving on to Commissioner Krieger.
Yeah, I guess following what the Commissioner Jack Shaw said, my, my mother-in-law came over a couple of weeks ago and she was so excited about our new former stand. So we had to, we had to explain to her, I know, it's not that kind of former stand. She was really excited. Yeah, the only question I have is just more of a procedural question. I know the sign one that says you're limited to two signs unless we Plan Commission approves otherwise. So I didn't know if we needed to specifically draw that out or if we just, just the approval of the signs is enough. So that's just a procedural question. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Krieger. I'd like to respond to that just for a moment for the Planning Commission's consideration. I read that as two signs per building frontage, and I'm seeing that as per side. Also, let's consider one sign is the address sign. And so I'm seeing a level of exemption there as that's required for visual identification and any response necessary. So let's consider that as we move towards our consideration for approval here. Let's go to Commissioner Wood.
Yeah, I had just a question about the sign that hasn't been installed yet. What is the size of that? Because I think I read somewhere it can't be any more than 25 square feet. I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong.
I don't know if that, Jeremy, I don't know if that's
because I know the main sign can be up to 100 square feet. And then I thought I read somewhere that the other signs can't be any more than 25.
So there are, there are a couple of ordinances. Again, like I said, we're in the developmental stages from the eldest sign ordinance to, we have a subcommittee currently working on new ordinances. There is on our website a revised sign ordinance that is not currently adopted so far as I know. And I do see a few other parameters. What I've specific, what I found most applicable to this this particular signage were the parameters that I had mentioned, again, 1.5 square feet per 100 square feet of building frontage, whether it be a single or individual letters, it specifically says, and no more, no greater protrusion. And there was a height requirement also. The exact dimension escapes me, but as I recall, I'm feeling it as compliant thus far.
Okay, okay. And I don't know if you guys received the photo drawings that we submitted, but so the the remaining sign is the second largest. Yes, correct. So it's smaller. The letter height is actually smaller than the one on the the street facing side that has Enjoy Delray Farms underneath. My quote shows 64 and 3/8ths by 96. So, yeah, and again, it's the stacked, so.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Yeah, I just, I read an order. I don't know what ordinance I was reading from what, so, yeah.
Sure. Yeah.
And so we're seeing that as just over 40 square feet.
Okay.
So we should, we should be fine there relative to the building frontage square footage. Very well. Moving on to Commissioner Berger.
I, I like the improvements. I like the signage. I, I like, if you look at that, that intersection, it really actually ties in with Walgreens signage. And as long as it's compliant with the, with, with the ordinances, I don't have any complaints at all. As for the green cross, comments on that, I like the fact that that doesn't exist on the building. And I have to assume that it's probably a strong word of mouth business. And if you're seeing 2% to 3% increase in business per week, obviously, the word of mouth is getting out there and that's, that's, that's positive. That's the best advertising you can possibly have. So I think it looks great. I, I support it as long as it's in compliance.
And we've, some, our feedbacks from some of our partners is that they've found at some of their other shops that the green cross can actually be a deterrent for some customers, you know, not wanting to be associated or I shouldn't say not associated, but it it's kind of like Larry was saying, an old world mentality of medicinal versus recreational, whereas even if you are shopping at a recreational place, you can still use it for medicinal purposes, and we have quite a few customers who do that, but the, a lot of the, the trendier new facades are removing the green cross and being more recreational focused.
If you can get referrals from your current clients, they're going to, pardon the pun, weed out the riffraff on their own because you're going to invite people that they like, not, not the people they don't like.
Thank you. And we are planning to do a billboard campaign, so the store will hopefully get a lot busier for all of us.
All right, all great input. You know, it's important to note that the site, former owners, of course, was actually the very first legalized cannabis facility on a medicinal level in all of Monterey County, and now under new ownership and just previously under recreational. So we're pioneers in a way. And again, we're happy to have you doing business in our city. Happy to have that working relationship with you, and we wish you in your business a prosperous future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So any further comments from the Commissioners?
Yep, Commissioner Burton here.
Yes, Commissioner Burton, please.
Hello, everybody. I have one question and then one comment. My question is for our City Manager slash Chief of Police, and that is, how are we doing on incidents in and around the businesses in Delray Oaks?
I would say that they have decreased steadily, of course, with the, with competition at first. And they've remained lower than probably average in years past. And I cannot recall the last incident report we've taken, and the traffic complaints are significantly decreased in in that area, you know, historically, and and they have stayed that way lately.
Excellent.
Okay, so safety wise, we're all good?
Yes.
Okay, and my, my statement is this. I think that the signage looks fine and I'm good to go with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. Would any member of the public like to comment on item seven B? Opening to public comments. Do not see any. All right, public comment is therefore closed, and I'll entertain a motion.
I move we accept ARC 21-02 as submitted.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion passes unanimously and the application is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, item number seven C. The applicant's name is Alan Turpin. The owner's name is Damian and Alexis Lauderdale, R. rather. I see Mr. and Mrs. Lauderdale present, I believe. This is concerning the project at 11 Bray Place. Project description is as follows. They are requesting approval to build a 1,090 square foot second story addition over an existing 1,663 foot single family residence to include three bedrooms, all colors and materials to match existing. And so at this time, I would ask the applicant or representative of to come forward and present any comments in addition to their application.
Oh, this is Alexis Lauderdale. Thank you guys for taking the time to hear the future plans we have for our home. So the reason that we want to add the addition is currently, we have a single story. We'd like to open that up so that way we can have some more living space downstairs and allow our three boys to have their own individual bedrooms upstairs with a small activity room for them. We're hoping that by doing this, it will add value to the rest of the homes around our cul-de-sac as well as throughout Delray Oaks. And so we've been working with Alan, who's been drawing our plans and getting bids from current construction workers so we can proceed forward with making sure that this adds value and that it looks not like an addition, but original piece of the home.
All right. So I'd like to begin with we've received considerable opposition. There are several neighbors contesting the project. The Planning Commission has received several letters. They came to us a bit later than it would be to, to add them to tonight's packet, so the public does not have the privilege of seeing them as we do. But again, all of the information in tonight's meeting, including the letters, will be available for viewing at City Hall in the Planning Commission's public record. I'm going to go ahead to public comment first, and I'd like to open it up to the general public. But to begin with, the authors of the aforementioned letters, I see that certainly a couple of them are here. And so if I could see a raise of hands, if you submitted a letter, yes, I see Mrs. Solcing. And Mrs. Solcing, I understand that you'll be reading not only your letter, but a neighbor of ours in the community, Mrs. Mr. and Mrs. Jones's letter as well. So take the time you need, please. And Randy, if you could, I see the hand raised. Am I clicking that or am I muting that?
No, just go ahead and American talk and then I'll start the timer.
I'm Hallak and Commissioners. My name is Mary Solcing. My property, 14 Hillwell Place, abuts the property proposed for the second story addition. We share a common rear property line. I am here tonight to oppose approval of the application on behalf of myself and my partner, Deanna Kroszewski. Our opposition is based on the following. One, the orange webbing that is supposed to delineate the extent and shape of the proposed addition is deficient in that it does not include the entire project. The exterior wall at the front of the house is only partially in place and webbing to connect the sidewalls from front to back. The rear corner of the existing, the second thing, the rear corner of the existing structure is only four to five feet located on the common property line. That means there is an existing approachment into the rear yard setback, which we understand to be 20 feet. This is not addressed in the application or attachments. Instead, it appears there may have been an intent to obstruct this back from the Planning Commission. We say that because the site plan submitted is at a ridiculously small scale of one foot equals 10 feet 8 inches and does not delineate the setback lines. Three, our biggest objection to this project is that it will result in a monstrously large structure looming over it will reduce the morning light and it results in a complete loss of privacy to our entire backyard, hot tub decks, dining room and master bedroom. This will undoubtedly result in a negative impact on the market value of the property. For the loss of privacy is exacerbated by the placement of two windows directly facing our property. During the recent construction of a fence on our common property line, Alexis told me that they planned to build a second story addition and asked for advice. Both Deanna and I told her we did not like the idea and added if they proceeded, it was hoped they would at least design it so the windows would not face our backyard. As you can see from the plans, that request was completely ignored. Instead, two of the three bedrooms windows faces part of the house and the third faces our property. We're not architects, but it sure appears all three bedrooms could easily have windows facing. In addition, the activity room has two windows, one directly facing our property, the other facing our neighbor's property, also causing them a loss of privacy. As I'm sure it is, as it is with all of you, our privacy is very important to us. Therefore, we strenuously object to the addition of a second story to the property at 11 Bray. And I would like an additional time to share the layer from Jack and Frederica Jones, if I may.
Yes, of course. Please proceed at your pleasure.
Okay. Dear Planning, this is from Jack and Frederica Jones. They live at 8 Hillwell Place. Dear Planning Commissioners, Jack and I are unable to attend the March 10th, 2021 Planning Commission meeting and write this letter on behalf of the building project of our neighbors on 11 Bray Place. As residents of Delray Oaks, we are always delighted to see growth and properties upgraded in our community. Jack and I just recently afforded an opportunity to view the architectural plans for the 11 Bray Place project. After careful review of the plans, we share our concerns regarding the lack of privacy, not only for ourselves, but also for our neighbors on Hillwell Place and Bray Place. Our immediate concern is the window located on the south of the residence. This window looks directly onto our property and with new, with new access into the back of our home. While contemplating ideas or suggestions for better privacy for our home and possibly for our neighbor directly behind our home on Bray Place, we walked through our community and noticed other two-story modifications were approved with the windows being located under the roofline and were non-operational. One residence even had quote, quote, bottled, unquote, tight glass for the windows. We are all part of this small friendly community and are quote, good neighbors, unquote, honoring each other's privacy. We hope our neighbors will consider alternatives to their project that respects the privacy of their immediate surrounding neighbors. Thank you for your consideration and taking the time to review our concerns. If you request further input, please don't hesitate to call us at 559-912647. Sincerely, Jack and Frederica Jones. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Solcing. I'd like to, before we move on, direct our attention to the first paragraph of the last letter that was just submitted by and read by. submitted by and read by Ms. Solzinger by Jack and Frederica Jones, where it reads we write this letter on behalf of the building project of our neighbors at 11 Place. Let it be understood that that should be more so interpreted as in regards to and that the narrator, the author of the letter does not represent the applicant in any way. Otherwise, the entirety of the letter is duly noted for the planning commission's consideration. And let's move on to another another of our neighbors. I see Mr. Shu. If you'd like to narrate your letter and/or provide comments towards the project, concerning the project, please do so now.
He's not there. Can't see him.
Mr. Shu may have left us for a moment.
He's on there. I think he's muted.
Okay.
How did these fellows meet? I don't see him.
I will unmute him here if I can.
Now, how's that? Hear me now?
We can hear you, Mr. Shu. Please proceed.
Okay, I have a couple. The first question I'd like to ask is how many letters were written about this project, and how many are for and how many are against? Since we didn't get to read all the letters.
I'll address that question immediately. We have five letters in contesting the project. Three are neighbors from the city of Delray Oaks and two adjacent properties in the Plumas, City of Seaside proximity.
Okay, I'll go ahead and read my letter now. Okay, I am writing to my concerns about the application for the second-story addition at 11 Bray Place. I have been a resident of Delray Oaks for over 40 years, and I'm a licensed general contractor. My first concern is the size of the project, which is a total after they, if they do this addition of 2,753 square feet, which I think is really excessive for this size of a lot. And then also, the flagging, to me, does not show what the plans show. It's downskilled from what those plans are. And the second concern I have is with a water moratorium, how are they going to put another bathroom upstairs? They already have two bathrooms now. And it's my understanding that you can't get a third bathroom. That's just one of my concerns. My next concern is the parking. We've had quite a bit of parking problems on this, on the street. And they have four cars, and two of them have been parked on the street until the last couple of months. For some odd reason, they don't do it anymore. But while this construction is going on, there's going to be six or eight months of construction. Where are all these cars going to be parked? And where are all the workers going to park? I mean, now when they have work done at their house, they block driveways, and you know, they're not real considerate. And my next concern is the workers. I just want to make sure, because most of the stuff they have done, they have done on the weekends. I want to make sure that they're licensed contractors and they have a city building license. So those are my main concerns. Thank you.
Can I address those, please?
I will come back to you again, Ms. Lauderdale. Yes, of course. I will take an opportunity to address a few of the questions in the order that Mr. Shu presented them. Again, for the planning commissioners' consideration, one of the first concerns was the total square footage totaling 2,753 square feet. The planning commission will see lot coverage a bit differently than total square footage when we get into a second story. We are more so looking at the project as the footprint of the project. This is to include any structure, including outbuildings, any structure, building, or impermeable surface such as a solid concrete patio. So we're really just looking at the square footage of the, essentially, the first floor for this. Secondly, I'll address the water issues. For the public's information and for the consideration of the project by the planning commission, I can tell you that Ordinance 98 of the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District's Board of Directors nigh on 20 years ago finalized an amendment to residential water facility fixture values. Covers several items, but essentially allows any structure that has a single-family residence that has only one bathroom as its primary, in its primary residence to add another bathroom. So that is, they're okay there. Addressing the Mr. Shu's concerns about parking here at this meeting, the planning commission is, we're here primarily for architectural review and with some other considerations. But many of the items that you've highlighted, parking issues in front of driveways, parking congestion, parking that is too lengthy. These are items that are enforceable. They're contained within our municipal code and are enforceable by law enforcement. So if there's a nuisance that's reported, should this project be approved, then that should be directed towards our local police department. And lastly, concerning the hiring of contractors, I can assure you that our city staff interviews and vets not only the homeowner, the applicant, but any general contractor that applies, ensuring that business licensure and valid California state license, general contractor's license is held. And then it's the onus of the the prime contractor himself to ensure that any of the specialty trades or subcontractors that he hires are also licensed and hold business license, or city business licenses. So as far as enforcement of that, that's not within the planning commission's address. I can say I would advise, though, under the obvious or seeming scrutiny that this project is receiving thus far, that our building officials and local governments will be involved to ensure that that everything's on the up and up relative to your concerns. And so, you know, I will, I will give Mrs. Lauderdale now.
Can I say one more thing?
Yes, Mr. Shu.
On the, on the water, you said that if they have one bathroom, they can add another one. The plans that I looked at, it shows two bathrooms already existing, and they want to put another one upstairs. So that would make it a total of three.
So I can
While I review the plans, to Mr. Shu's point, although, again, I may be mistaken. And again, the planning commission, our primary purpose here is for architectural review and a few other considerations. The detail of the plans will be verified by our city building officials and approved only if compliant. And they'll only be able to move forward then accordingly. Yes. I am seeing a second powder room with closer examination.
Jeremy?
Yes, please.
The water is, the water issue is not ours to deal with. That's not our problem.
Correct. As I said, that's under the watchful eye of our building official and plan check by a city's building official will be verified, and so on and so forth. So a response from Mrs. Lauderdale?
Yes, so we are proposing to add a powder room, which I've already confirmed with the water company that I have an additional two water credits. Because when we moved in, we did put in more efficient fixtures in the bathrooms to make that happen. So, and you can confirm that. We also have an application for that. And so with that being said, to, in regards to Mr. Shu's comments, he himself has a second story. And so he can probably attest to wanting to have an addition put to his house. With that being said, we have never parked illegally on the street, and we have never blocked a driveway. Actually, our driveway is the one who gets blocked the most, and we kindly go to our neighbor's house and ask them to please move their vehicle so we can get out. With that being said, in the meantime, as the project's going on, we won't be occupying the residence, so our cars won't be here. So the workers will actually be parking directly in our driveway. So that is also a courtesy, and they can be accessing the back gate, which will be able to be open to be making things even more convenient for our fellow neighbors. So we have thought about how to do this in a respectful manner that doesn't inconvenience our other neighbors as much as possible. With that being said, I do believe that Mr. Shu has other issues with parking that we can take offline.
Thank you for that valuable information. Thank you for that contribution and explanation. All right, I'm seeing a Mr. Trender. We have a letter from Katie Trender. Mr. Trender, would you like to narrate your letter or make any additional comments?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Yeah, we really, I think that I can emphasize the fact that can you hear me? I hope.
Yes, loud and clear. Go ahead.
So basically, the letter stated, I'm writing our concerns regarding the addition to 11 Bray Place located where next door. We have no opposition to the addition to the structure, even to the second story. Our concerns is annoying our neighbors, I think we can work it out, is basically maybe put up some shrubbery or something so we have privacy on either side. We would suggest either repositioning, or it would appear that the two rooms upstairs privacy to our neighbors or planting tall, mature trees or vegetation to just give us privacy on either side. That's our only comments that we have at this time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Trender.
So this is Alexis. I will just say, we would do, we were obligation to make sure everyone has privacy. We have no problem working with the neighbors to make sure that they feel like they have privacy, just as we would want to have privacy. So I am willing to work, and we have communicated several times with our fellow neighbors who just spoke, and they can attest to, we are very willing and accommodating to make things happen that make everyone feel comfortable.
Thank you, Mrs. Lauderdale. Sounds like we're moving in the right direction towards resolution and compromise. Any other members of the public care to comment on the project? I see a hand raised by Mrs. Chris Brown. Go ahead, please.
Hi, I'm not an immediate neighbor to this project, but I do visit on Hillwell Place, Ms. Solzinger's place. And we use, we meet, when the weather is nice, we get together in the backyard, and I, I will tell you. I mean, she's only got a backyard, I suppose, about 20 feet deep. She could tell you exactly. I could tell you that if there's a, there's a building, a second story, it's going to be looming over that backyard. And it would be very uncomfortable, and you'd have to have some pretty tall trees to cover that up. And then the trees would block the light anyway. So it would just be very uncomfortable to see a large building there, and that's my comment.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Any other public comments? Seeing no others at this time, one more call for public comments. You, sir, waving frantically. Mr. Ellsworth, please.
I was also wondering who wrote a letter in opposing this project. It was not, it was in passing. They said, we'd like to build a second story. Never given any details, and after seeing the plans, it is showing they were trying to deceive us in how much it actually is. I'm sure they would not like us to build a second story, looking straight into their backyard. So why would they feel it's okay to look straight into our backyard as opposed to the neighbors behind them and the neighbors next to them? They, the size of the house will not match the aesthetics of Delray Oaks. It's a would be, end up being a four-bedroom house with a one-car garage and no park. They have one-car garage, one driveway, and no street park. So if they do decide to sell in the future, it would be a massive house with no park. It is going to be a huge project, so they're not going to be living there. So the rest of us are going to have to deal with it for six to eight months, which I work odd hours, my wife works for odd hours, and so we get to deal with the dust and congestion of everyone, and we strongly oppose this project. That's all I got.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Ellsworth. Any other public, any, any other public comments? And then I'll come back to you, Mrs. Lauderdale, for closing comments.
You said we gave you no details, but we're trying to
I see. Yes.
Yeah, I'm across the street, and once again, I have privacy concerns because the second story would look into my children's bedrooms, which seems a little odd. And it would look into my backyard as well. And in addition, I'm not terribly excited about listening to the construction noise for six to eight months, and I guess the parking that would happen is right next to my house, essentially. So for those reasons, I'd be opposed to the project as well.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Any last public comments? Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Anyone else? All right, Mrs. Lauderdale, I'll give you an opportunity for some brief closing comments, if you will.
So I have some clarifying questions. So in the midst of several people stating what they feel, anyway, we did any project regardless of the size of the second story, we're going supposedly somehow block somebody or take away somebody's privacy, just the way that the houses are built on the lots. And yes, I see you're shaking your head, Ben. With that being said, that means we can never expand our house. And I feel like that's contradictory to the other people who have been adding on to second stories throughout Derry Oaks. There's several houses that I've looked at that are the same size as the one that we are opposing to build. And so with that, we're basically minimizing what we can do for our family to build a future here in Derry Oaks. With that said, it's going to handcuff us to where we are in our square footage. And with that said, I would propose, just to let you know, is what it's going to do is it's going to drive growing families away from the area and end up renting this house out to renters and then us going to find another house in another community. And so then people will be frustrated with, as they were before, when people are renters, they don't take that ownership and make sure that their house is upkept as well as others. There's no way we can make every single person, obviously, who's opposed happy due to the privacy, because it doesn't matter how we do it. Understanding that, yes, this is a big project. But with that being said- Understanding that, yes, this is a big project, but with that being said, it's six months for a beneficial of up, up costs on houses around us by making it a more well-rounded structure, making it more appealing for other families to come in if we ever did sell it. And to your point, if we did sell it, we would be the one dealing with the fact that's a one-car garage, which actually would decrease the value. So, it wouldn't want, people would look at that as a negative for buying a bigger house with a one-car garage. Most people who want that, want that bigger house, want a two-car garage. So, really, it's to make this house a more appealing house for ourselves. I understand that you guys are worried about privacy, but we just stated that we would work with you to prevent that. And I wouldn't care if you built a second story on any of your houses, because I would want you to be able to do what you want with your own house. That's why you purchased your house, is to be able to grow into it and build onto it. And we've worked with several of the neighbors, building new fences and going half of the cost to help with that privacy. And so, now that we're wanting to do something for ourselves, they're not wanting us to, but they were fine when we proposed and offered to build a fence with them and make those fence structures better, so that way they could all have better privacy.
Thank you, Mrs. Lauderdale. Any other public comments? Am I seeing a hand again from someone in Dennis Schu's window? Is that Mrs. Schu?
I don't have a problem with their addition if they, the size is huge. But they didn't come and talk to any of us neighbors, they never showed us anything, and I don't like that, I'm sorry. I mean, I have an addition, but we had to be respectful for our neighbors back 30 years. I think they should have came to us.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Schu.
So, can I make a comment to that? So, we've been in a pandemic, and I'm a nurse, and I've been working almost 18 hours a day. So, I'm sorry if I haven't had the time to round with each of you individually. I did stop by and say we had, we were doing a second addition to read, address the regards that we, you know, didn't, weren't honest. That's not the fact. The fact is, I said we're doing a second story addition, nobody asked for details. I simply said, we're considering doing a second story, would you be okay with that? I was then told yes by several neighbors without them asking for what the details were. With that being said, no, I didn't have time to go by, plus we're in a pandemic, and I don't want to have people feel uncomfortable knocking door to door when people are reluctant to have people at their house right now, talking to them because they're not sure, I'm not sure how people feel about the coronavirus. And I'm working long hours, so we apologize if you feel like we didn't come door to door. But in this time, in this age with the pandemic, it's really unsure how people feel about that. So, and then the people we did talk to, they did say that they did not have a problem with it and did not ask for further details. So, I don't see what, how that would be not being honest with anybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Lauderdale, and thank you for your selfless service for us all on the front lines. I'm getting the strong sense that you're going to have an opportunity to, to discuss things more in depth with your neighbors. So, we are going to close things out here on the public comment aspect, unless I see anyone insistent on making any other public comments. Seeing none, we're going to move ahead. I'm going to start this off by saying, so, a couple of issues from the planning commission's perspective, some valid points that were raised and noticed by, by the commissioners. We visit the sites, the, the project sites prior to, to review, prior to approval in these meetings. There are, the, the netting does fall a bit short. It is the southeast corner, that eve is not quite delineated, it's not quite as clear as it could be. We do need to see physical representation, a dimensional representation of the entirety of the project. I do see that you added the dormer, but, so we're, we're a little less than we'd like to see there. Now, we do have several warranted concerns from, from your surrounding neighbors. We also have a few conditions that were noted, they were suggested that I might mention are temporary. The noise from construction, the time, the, the length of time for project completion, all of the collateral elements that, these are the better, better management practices that, that contractors and specialty tradesmen are responsible for practicing. Also, we have ordinances in place as to when the, the time, when the work can and cannot be performed. So, you know, one of the questions we ask is, what sort of feedback have you had from your neighbors? And it was indicated to us that the general consensus was that everyone was pretty much okay with it. And we're getting the sense that is not so much the case now, there may have been some misunderstanding along those lines. What I do like is that we didn't hear just purely grievances. A lot of your neighbors offered solutions and alternatives, obscured glass, perhaps some small design changes, the utilizing mature landscaping to improve privacy. So, you know, there, there are pros and cons coming from both sides, and we, the planning commission, hear all of your testimonial duly noted and considered. At this point, what I'd like, the direction I'd like to steer this in is neither an approval nor a denial of the application, but more so a postponement for you and your neighbors to have another run at it, some discussion, considering all we've heard tonight. If you can safely gather and maybe consider other options, compromises that will work for everyone. We really like to see an amicable discussion amongst immediate neighbors and some resolution before it's presented to us. We're obviously not there yet. The, the next step would be to send it upstream, so to speak. With such a level of opposition, I, I can see that any decision we might make here tonight will very likely be appealed. You, as the applicant, also, of course, have the right to appeal any decision, any party has, for the next 20 days after the close of tonight's meeting. But that's, that's really the, the direction that I'd like to, to steer tonight's meeting in, is more so a postponement than any defining decision. I'll rely on the rest of the commission to help us decide as to what direction we're going to go in. And I would also recommend that the application be held in continuance, and that any associated, just the application fees be waived, and this still be considered one action. So, I'm going to, I'm going to send it down the line to Vice Chairman Hayworth for any input he has.
I think we, first of all, we need to, you know, the next part of this should be where we ask for clarification on things. So, I just have a couple of things. I noticed that, you know, we do have a square footage ordinance, and it does address second stories. And this house is right at the limit, so it is big. The front face, the front of the property narrows, so it looks even smaller from the front. And I noticed in the picture, it's not real clear whether this house is even inside the setbacks. You know, the only picture that really talks about it is, the drawing is on the very front page, and there's really no dimensions there. It looks almost like that one corner could be within the setbacks, would be existing non, possibly non-conforming. We don't know that, because it doesn't say anything there. Yeah, the netting is insufficient, as far as I'm concerned, you can't really get a sense for the scope of that project, so that needs to be rectified. And the 1,663 square feet of the existing home, is that including the garage, or is that just the, the living space? It's not, it's not clear.
That's including the garage, because on the plans, when it asks us to submit, it requires you to include the garage on the lower square footage.
Okay, often that's called out, but it's not, it's not clear there. So, the wa, the water's not our concern, so, I mean, that's, that's yours to deal with when, you know, you go to the water board and for final plan check and all of that. As far as the noise is concerned, I think Jeremy addressed that, I think the ordinance talks about when the hours of work can be, so that needs to be respected, or there'll be some enforcement, I'm sure. See what else I have here? I was going to ask about neighbors, but I don't have to. Anyway, I guess that's really all I have for now, thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Hayworth. Commissioner Jack Shaw, if you please.
Oh, lordy, I got a whole list of things here, and I've been writing them down, I wish I could have them a little bit more organized. But, yeah, I don't know if the lot has been surveyed, it should be nice to get that done and make sure that there are within the setbacks. I would, back to the flagging, I wrote that down, that it'd be nice to get that re-flagged, so we could actually see what's going on. As far as, you know, the, the neighbors' complaints, I feel for them. You know, a lot of people, we've approved buildings, remodels and so forth, and we just unfortunately have to put up with that kind of, you know, noise and whatever. But the ordinance is set up where, you know, eight to five, you know, they, they don't be there at 10 o'clock at night banging around. So, it's during normal working hours. As far as privacy concerned, yeah, we all run against that, and unfortunately, that's why we put drapes on our windows. You know, what can I say? It's, it's unfortunate that that does. I think the applicant should talk to the neighbors and maybe relocate some windows or put them up higher, so, or make them smaller. I don't know how, you know, that might be something they can talk, to talk about. My problem, on a personal note, is, old as I am, I look at this remodel, and the children's bedrooms are almost as big as the master bedroom. You know, I'm used to living, when I was a kid, 10 by 10 was where I lived, and, but I don't want to put that burden on other applicants, but I just think they're awful. Because this project is so big, they might consider downsizing the, the children's bedrooms a little bit to come, help the neighbors deal with this, such a large building or remodel. On a architectural note, the eyebrow on the front, I talked to your husband, and it would be nice to tie in that eyebrow with the, the bedroom to the right of that, and maybe put a little arch in the window, so it sort of matches, because that eyebrow doesn't really tie in with anything. And it would be nice to, you know, you wouldn't have to change the window, just make an eyebrow, so those, it would tie in a little bit better. That was my only concern with the architecture review. And Jeremy, you mentioned lot coverage from one of the neighbors, I looked down, and they have like five outbuildings in the back that are scattered all over. I don't know if you want to consider those lot coverage, but there's an awful lot in the backyard. I do think this should be carried over, if nothing else, for the re-flagging, and it would be nice to talk to neighbors somehow. Maybe a group, group, I'm trying to think of a word for it, a group setting, perhaps, so you get, get everything out in the open. My only concerns, carry it over, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Shaw. Commissioner Krieger.
I'm Ricky, let's fly off line.
I apologize, you certainly are, as is Commissioner Berger. Therefore, we'll go to Commissioner Wood.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I have some of the same concerns that George had with the architectural in the front, just that the eyebrow doesn't seem to tie in to anything else. And then, one thing, just to, I don't know, maybe to mitigate the privacy issues, you can offer to plant trees, not only on your, your, and your property, but maybe your neighbor's property. So, sometimes, I mean, that, that might help to ease some of the, ease some of that as privacy issues. And it would be nice to see this with a full site plan on the house with dimensions and the setbacks, next time around. That's about it.
You, Commissioner Wood. And we'll finish up with Commissioner Burton.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to offer a different approach, hopefully you can hear me. This is for the Lottardales. For my, for me personally, I want your family in Delray Oaks. I want you to be here. We need families in Delray Oaks. I love the fact that you're trying to remodel your house, I love the fact you're trying to build it bigger to support your family. I love all of that. That, to me, is what Delray Oaks is all about. I understand your neighbors' concerns. I, I did a remodel before I became a planning commissioner. And during that remodel, I had to work with my neighbors. If I wouldn't have, I would have never, and I did a major remodel. If you want, you can come up to my house and just drive past it on 1048 Paloma and take a look at it. I wanted to remodel it, but I had to do a little bit of negotiation with my, with my neighbors. So, drive up and take a look at it if you want. But we want your family here, and this is, well, I, I guess I probably don't speak for everybody, but I think I do. The reason I'm in Delray Oaks, I like this community, it's fairly close-knit, and it's, we have nice police force and security, and we want your family, we want the Lottardales in Delray Oaks. We want more families like yours in Delray Oaks. So, if there's a way to work it out with your neighbors, that's probably the easiest route. And probably the best route. So, for the neighbors that are sending your letters, I hear, as a planning commissioner, I hear you loud and clear. I, I am not saying that your concerns are not legitimate, they are 100%. And this is what we do as a community, we talk to each other, and we work things out. I think there's a solution out there somewhere, and I thank you, Commissioner Halleck, for taking, taking us through that, I think there's a solution out there. I'm not sure what it is yet. If this costs you extra money, and this is for the Lottardales, we need to know about that as well. So, I would, I would hope that you would tell us whether this is going to cost you extra money by us delaying this. I want to know about that. And I'll tell you what, if nothing else, Delray Oaks should, and this is my opinion, offset that with the fees that we charge you somehow. You know, I'm, I've been a big, the other commissioners have heard me, I don't believe in fees for many things. And I've always said, give it to them for free, don't charge them a penny for that. And whatever we can do, you should feel just in asking us for it. We work for you, the Lottardales, the same as we work for everybody else. So, please, do not, do not give this up. I, I know you, I know you heard a lot of, we don't like this, and we don't like that, and we don't like this. But what we do like is, we like your family in Delray Oaks. And that, I will speak for the whole, I'm, I'm just, I'll just say it, I'm speaking for the whole community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. And Mrs. Lauderdale, i- i- if you'd like to address Commissioner Burton's question as to financial burden and delay of the project, I believe.
So, we were hoping to start, and I don't know when you say this is going to be passed, you know, passed on to the, or postponed, if that means that we're going to get back on the agenda in April, because we were hoping to start the project into May. That way, we can be done by November. This way, we can make sure that everyone gets their holidays quiet and peaceful when families are starting to come around and gather. Hopefully the pandemic and the vaccine will allow us to do that this year. So we're hoping to, you know, reduce that. So if we're able to come together with the neighbors and come up with an agreement that we could get this approved April, we were really hoping to start the project in May to really look at that holiday season, to give space back to everyone and not to have as much noise so we can have happy holidays. With that being said, I, I understand, you know, that planting trees on our side, I think that there'd be additional cost to try to plant trees on both side. Trees are significantly expensive, especially large ones. So I'm okay planting them on our side, but I think I would feel not quite comfortable asking people to plant trees on their own side, which is their, their yard to maintenance. With that being said, so I'm willing to talk to the neighbors and negotiate. But any way it looks like it, I, there's no way to move all the windows around to where it's not gonna prevent, impeding on privacy from everyone because then the whole top story cannot have windows. Any way you cut it, our backyard looks across the street to Seaside Plumas. Our side yard looks to the neighbors to the left of us. Our other side yard looks to the neighbors to the right. And our backyard directly behind us is connected to the neighbors behind us. So there's no way to move windows where it's not gonna overlook somebody's yard. But we can try to do our best to put shrubbery up and things to that sort. If the neighbors would like, they can feel free to send me suggestions. Most of them have my cellphone, so they could easily call me if they have questions instead of waiting till the next meeting to do that. So.
Oh, I, oh, I should.
Yeah.
I should have told them that I'll be happy to meet with all of them.
And, and my contractor is listening on, or my architect is listening on the phone. So he heard your guys' plan about the front, the needs for blending that in. And then he also said that he'd be willing to meet with some of the neighbors to address any concerns. So if they have a time and a date that works, we can coordinate that.
Okay, this, this is all great. I really feel like we're, we're moving towards a solution and a positive rapport amongst the community. And so.
And we'll get that netting updated to a better standard. So.
Great, thank you. I was going to say that, yeah, I, I, I'm still leaning towards, steering tonight's meeting towards, in the direction of neither approval or denial, a continuance which will give you further time to establish more dialogue with your neighbors concerning the project. Consult your architect for any design changes if necessary, plan for landscaping. And just kind of iron out some of the details and bring it back to us. As far as the timeline, typically I believe it's 30 day submission before an item can be heard. But under the circumstances, Karen, correct me if I'm wrong, but we may be able to, we will definitely try to get this back. If this is the direction we take, then we would try to get you back on the agenda as soon as possible, ideally April. So you don't lose any more time on, you know, the otherwise pleasant progression of life. And so if we haven't any other discussion amongst the planning commission, I will entertain a motion comprised of our discussion.
You probably can't see it, but I have a hand up.
Oh. Go ahead, Commissioner Burton.
See my funny little hand there?
I do now.
Um, my, my only input is that, I'm gonna take my hand down. My only input is that if we need a special meeting, guys, I'm in. Whatever day you want to do it. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. And yeah, I'm seeing a lot of accommodation and potential compromise on all parties concerned. And that's good to see in our community. So again, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we continue this forward with some looking forward at fixing the netting. I have, still have a concern about the setbacks and really where the fence lines are. So talk with the architect and the neighbors and some discussion about landscaping. And maybe when they come back, maybe some suggestions to the landscaping for the neighbors to look at.
Do I have a second? Do we need to further define that in any way for anyone? Is that a second, Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, City Clerk Monami?
I just want to make sure that I'm getting the motion correct. You want the netting redone? You need clarification of the fence lines and the setbacks?
Yeah, it looks, it looks to me like one corner of the house might be within the setbacks, but we don't know.
Yes, so further detail on the site plan to indicate setback in the would be the southwest corner of the parcel.
Okay.
And, and the, the idea was about, I thought the other idea was about flagging, not fencing, that it needs to be flagged properly.
Yes, that's included in the motion. We want them to refine and correct the, the flagging.
Yes.
We will represent dimensional properties. And now the site plan to be further defined, to indicate setbacks. And we'd really like to see, I think, your ideas as far as design changes and landscaping before we impose any conditions there. We'll, we'll review that next time around, I believe. So not to get too far off track and stray from the motion on the table. But is, is that, is that clarified well enough for the record? Yes?
Yes, thank you.
All right. From the top, if you would, repeat in general, Commissioner, Vice Chairman Hayworth.
Maybe Karen can read back what she understood that I said probably more.
The motion was to have it come back with new flagging slash netting. The fence line.
Setbacks in particular in the boundaries, yeah.
On the southwest corner. And landscaping. Landscaping design.
Yeah, encourage the architect and the neighbors to get together like was, like the applicant has suggested.
Okay, got it.
All right, I think that's pretty much surmising things.
We, can I just say one thing? The setbacks, we'll get that information to you. But currently, we're not extending any further out than the house is already extended. So even the second story addition, it would be flush with where the house already ends, which is the master bedroom. So it's not, so it's not coming out any further than what it already is. The footprint of the house.
Yes, Mrs. Lauderdale. And we realize these are pre-existing conditions, the fence line versus the existing structure. I- if we run into any difficulties to that point around, in your next visit, perhaps survey work would be prudent. If adjusting fence lines is, is in order, we'll see at the next juncture. But that may be something in your best interest to report. If that's.
You broke up. It would be in our best interest to.
Uh, one of the other commissioners mentioned survey work might be, might be prudent. If there's any contest, anyone contests the, the actual, the physical fence line now and where your existing structure stands relative to it. I- i- if you'd like to discuss setbacks further, if that becomes an issue, it may be in your best interest to, to do a little more research before you present any of your findings to the planning commission next, next time we meet. Yes, Commissioner Jack Shaw?
I might add, even though that bedroom is existing, I don't know if we should, that might be a legal matter, whether we can approve a second story that would be out of compliance also. Don't know.
And, and believe me, we'll all be doing our homework on this in the interim and, and be best prepared for the next time we meet as well.
And I think the applicant should talk to staff frequently to keep her updated and so we keep this item moving along.
Who, who do you recommend that I talk to? Do you have email addresses that you'd like to connect me with? So that way I can make sure I'm frequently emailing individuals.
You can, you can call me at City Hall. I'm Karen. We've talked on the phone before.
Yeah, so just go through every, go through Karen for everything? Because he said to make sure I'm connecting with multiple staff. So I just want to make sure, am I supposed to be connecting with multiple people or just directly through Karen?
That would be me.
Karen is our wonderful staff.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, it's okay.
Right, so we have a motion on the table and hopefully we are all clear on said motion.
I'll second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And we therefore vote unanimously that the applicant's request will be held in continuance for further review for the aforementioned details. Flagging shall be corrected and further definition on the site plan indicative of setbacks. Yes, Karen?
I did not hear Doug Burton, Commissioner Burton?
He, he gave me a thumbs up, a virtual emoji.
Okay, so it's unanimous.
I, I've been doing that. I've been putting a thumbs up in there.
Okay.
You, you would hear me if I disagree, Karen. You know that.
I know, I would.
All right. We're making progress. Good. All right, thank you to all of our residents for your valuable input and thank you to the applicants. And our final item is 7D. Due to proximity and an acquaintance with the applicant, I myself will be stepping down as will, I believe, Commissioner Wood. And I will be handing the virtual gavel over to Vice Chairman Hayworth for this item.
Thanks, Jeremy. So we're gonna hear.
One moment, how do I get out? Do I?
Put a bag over your head.
Yes, yes.
Tech support, I'm gonna just leave.
Hit the mute and then click on the camera and that will turn your video off. You don't actually have to leave, but you just have to mute yourself and then turn your camera off. Click the camera, that will turn it off.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner Krieger.
All right. Bye, Jeremy. Okay, so project name. The applicant's name is Jeffrey P. Ernst, Ernest, filed ARC 21-03 at 919 Via Verde. Request approval to build a second bathroom to the west side of the existing single-family dwelling, all colors and materials to match existing. Anything else to add here? Is the applicant here have anything to, would, if I'd like to add anything to what's already written? He's muted. Mr. Ernest. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
There you are. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Yes, I believe that is complete. Just want to add a second bathroom to my current one bathroom house.
Great, pretty straightforward. So we'll go to the commissioners for clarification. George?
We've approved any number of these small additions with the houses as small as they are with one bathroom. I see no problem with adding a second and it looks like it's a very straightforward project, so I have no problem with it.
Thanks, George. Mr. Krieger?
Likewise, looking at it, no, no issues are apparent. I think it's, congratulations. I'm sure it's gonna be helpful.
Great. Commissioner Burger?
Looks like a lovely house, a nice project. Didn't we receive a letter from one of the neighbors strongly supporting the project? Karen says yes, which was nice. The only question I have is on, on the same side of the house where the proposed addition is going to be. The fence, the gate access isn't, isn't fluid. I don't know what the right term is for emergency access. I don't know if there's a plan, Mr. Ernest, to move the gate over to, towards the, the, the adjacent fence. That's the only thing and that's, I don't even think really an issue, just a more of a comment. By the way, we met your, met your wife and your kids. They were quite entertaining.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Burger. Yes, that, the addition will intersect and conflict with the current fence and the current gate. So yes, the, right now I'm planning to basically keep that fence where it is, but move the gate so that we will have access around the property.
Perfect. Yeah, that, that sounds great.
Thanks, Mr. Burger. Commissioner Burton?
Thank you for improving your home. We appreciate it in Delray Oaks. That's all I have.
Okay. So any public, anybody in the public have any comments? Hearing none. Any other comments from commissioners?
None for me.
Okay. I have no questions. It looks pretty straightforward to me. Everything looks in order. So I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we accept application number AC, ARC 2103.
Okay, who was that that seconded it?
Seconded, I don't know.
Commissioner Krieger? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ernest. You have a 20-day, there's a 20-day appeal period. So if you start before the 20 days, you start at your own risk. If somebody comes up before then, you may have to stop. So anyway, that's it. Thank you. I guess Jeremy can come back, huh?
Thank you very much.
There he is.
Well, that was fast. All right then, I believe that is all for this evening. Other than our closing announcement, announcements and comments by the planning commissioners, I will begin with myself. Thank you once again, all of you, for having the confidence in me and electing me to chair these meetings. I rise to the opportunity and looking forward to being an integral part of a prosperous future for the city of Delray Oaks alongside this very cohesive team. I will report that as promised the day, the meeting of my election, I'd like to hit the ground running. I have requested and was granted a individual briefing, briefing with City Manager Hoine and staff. The content, the context of that meeting was no, of course, no specific project, no action were taken or discussed merely to answer any questions that I might have relative to agendizing items and how to proceed, just procedural elements and how to navigate and steer the meetings. To that point, if any of the other commissioners have any, any input, any ideas, opinions, anything that we'd like to see as a team agendized, please feel. uh, agendized, please feel, uh, comfortable with contacting me on a one-on-one basis, uh, either email or phone. I'm always available and we'll work towards, uh, putting important issues, uh, on the agenda. Um, I believe that's all I have. Uh, glad to be part of the team and thank you all very much.
Couple of hands raised.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yeah, real quick, it's been a long night. And this, so, you, you were saying, Chairman, uh, Howick, and this is also for, uh, Acting City Manager Hoin. Uh, one thing I was gonna bring up before this evening already was, I have been contacted three, four, at least three or four times in the last couple of months. Uh, we, we need to take a look at, at educating, updating our, we know this, updating our ADU or, and then educating the public. I've got people, because, you know, there's a lot of this stuff now that gets magically thoroughly approved, doesn't go through the planning commission because it's the new state law. We just need to educate the public. There's, there are a lot of them, there's a, there's a house being turned into a duplex, there's ADUs being built, and I know they're working with the city, um, but I just think that that's something we should look at is, is getting, getting our ordinance updated so we're in compliance with the state and that would probably make things easier for staff. And then part of that would be educating the public about what's going on, because they're accosting me in the streets sometime like, hey, my neighbor's doing this. And I'm like, well, they probably can, because that's the new state law and they have no idea. So just something to put on your plate. Uh, and the other one came up in looking, I know I had to recuse myself, but I was still looking into the, the Bray issue. And as I started looking into it, something right there, it's always been there. You know, we say nothing at all. There's nothing, no consideration for, uh, the rights of neighbors, like view shed or anything like that. And I'm, don't pretend I have all the answers, but I think it warrants probably further discussion about what are the rights of, uh, neighbors when they're impacted by, um, you know, by an applicant, you know, privacy, view sheds, things like that. So I just think that there's, that's, uh, something at least we should discuss. And so just something to throw you on the plate for when you're looking at down the road at opportunities that, that a lot of things need to be addressed. So just a couple of thoughts. Thank you.
You know.
Commissioner Krieger, I appreciate your input.
Chair, Chair Howick, if I could just give, uh, Commissioner Krieger just some information since, uh, since we're here. Uh, we are already planning on holding a public workshop next month. Uh, mid-April, uh, we're looking at, uh, about ADUs in the ADU ordinance. Uh, City Attorney's already crafting, uh, along with Denise Duffy, crafting draft ordinances, uh, to be reviewed. Um, you know, uh, yeah, these, these have, these are all part of our strategic plan that has been posted on the website, on the strategic objectives list, and we're getting them on the, uh, on the, uh, calendar as quick as we can, you know. Our last city council meeting was four-plus hours, or so it seemed, uh, so.
It was.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get it in there as quickly as we can, but they, they are all on the list of things to do, so just wanted.
Great, thank you. And we can, as a workshop, I'm sure we can talk about the, the educating public, because once we do that, getting the word out. But thank you very much. I, I knew, I thought that Denise had referenced that, but I wasn't sure, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. I, I'm just gonna take this in the order of, uh, virtual hands that I see raised. Commissioner Burton?
Yep, I mentioned the checklist. You know, let me, let me put something together, guys. Um, there's a lot of stuff in that, uh, long-range plan that I think we need to pay attention to in every meeting. So I'll put something together and we can look at it. And, and if we like it, we like it. If we don't, we toss it away. Okay?
I think it'll be a valuable contribution. Thanks for your efforts, Commissioner Burton. Uh, move on to Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Yes, uh, there's a, in our, um, general plan, this might or might not apply to this, uh, past applicant. Uh, under L12, it says, "New and/or remodeled and, and expanded residential structures shall be visually attractive and, uh, compatible with existing residential neighborhoods and their appearance." That's sort of a vague, uh, or, or could be, um, interpreted in many different ways, but, uh, that's in our general plan and could be applied to this past, uh, item as far as, uh, visually, um, attractive. So I don't know how that, you know, we're, we're treading on some pretty uh, eggshells trying to make everybody happy. So, and also, uh, for, uh, City Manager, I noticed, and maybe the, pass this on to the police department. Um, 948 Paloma Road, I noticed a big tent in the front yard, like you could put a vehicle in. I don't know if they're doing a remodel or whether that's, hopefully that's not permanent. But, uh, it's not very attractive. He's already got a, a boat in the backyard and, uh, his truck parked on the side of the house and now that tent. So it'd be nice if, uh, we could get something, uh, answered about that. That's all for me. And, uh, Jeremy, you did a very nice job. That was a, one heck of a job to tackle today. Good job.
Thank you for your valuable points and, uh, for the compliments, Commissioner Jack Shaw.
You'll see that I re-raised my hand. Um, and it was because of Commissioner Jack Shaw. Uh, that point, um, that he just made, his first point about, we have this description, that's exactly what I'm talking about. The things that the, that the planning commission is supposed to be paying attention to. That's exactly it. And that, that point will be in my checklist.
Thank you, Commissioner Burton. A- and I agree, you know, uh, we do, uh, as per our, our, our vision, we're trying to maintain a cohesive and, uh, architecturally pleasant aesthetic environment. We've also got to balance in that times they are changing. Architecture today is not what it was in the 50s and the 70s, and I, I'm sure it sounds like we're all gonna work towards, uh, finding good mesh there, so. All excellent points. Uh, Vice Chairman Hayworth?
Yes, sir. Um, see you at the next meeting, though. Be, uh, maybe we'll have some attrition. It's the day before tax day, so. That's all for me. Thank you. Good job, Jeremy.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Uh, Commissioner Wood?
Oh, thanks, Jeremy. I have nothing to add. Doing a great job. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Wood. And we'll finish up with Commissioner Burger's comments.
I do, I do believe Commissioner Jack Shaw had his hand up. Am I correct?
Yep, go ahead. I have one last comment, but go ahead.
I, this was, uh, quite a, an educational first meeting for me. So, uh, I, I appreciate everyone's patience in trying to work things out, trying to extend all the branches and trying to be good neighbors. It's, it's challenging when it's emotional. And, uh, I, I really respect the job as that my fellow commissioners did today, trying to show their interest in being amicable and, um, and take your job very seriously. Thank you.
Well said, Commissioner Burger. Yes, you got a very full-bodied one your first time out. All right, Commissioner Jack Shaw?
Um, you know, we're, we're treading on some pretty thin ice, uh, with this addition. Um, you know, as we go forward, we might be setting a lot of precedences, uh, where everybody starts putting up multiple-story houses, not multiple-story, excuse me, whole-house additions. And I, I really, on a personal note, wouldn't want nice Delray Oaks, uh, to end up like, uh, out there on, um, oh, out there in Salinas. Oh, I can't remember the name of the street. But the, some of these subdivisions, uh, you know, you just reach across and can you hand over some toothpaste to the fellow next door to you? The houses are so close to each other. And, uh, I really don't know how to handle that to make everybody happy, but I don't know how to handle it. Again, I'd feel sorry that that would ever happen here. Maybe I'll be dead by the time that all happens, but we're gonna be setting some precedences with some major, uh, remodels if this continues, so. Last, last bit of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jack Shaw. Uh, Commissioner Krieger, did I see, uh, it looked like a praying hands emoji?
No, no, it was, no, no, I was just, I was agreeing with what.
Okay, it was, it was clapping, not playing, not praying?
No, it was clapping. I, I mean, I was just, that was the best I could find. I'd just say, yeah. I, I under, I hear what you're saying. My sister lives in Los Altos and that's exactly what's happened in their city. You know, it was all one-story homes and now you go up there and it's just block after block after block, the big giant blocks. And I, it, I, I just, I just was saying what, uh, Commissioner Jack, Jack, uh, Jack cause Charles, uh, concerns were, because it's something you need to talk about.
Definitely. All right, uh, Commissioner Wood?
Yeah, just a quick question. Um, how do we change policy? Well, I don't know the procedure on that, so just an education. Because like the square footage that's allotted per lot size, and also we don't, um, require landscape plans for any big remodels, and I think that's something that we might want to think of in the future, and I just don't know how, how do we go about changing things like that?
I will respond immediately by saying the planning commission is just one spoke in the wheel.
Right.
Uh, we'll do our part, certainly. Uh, City Manager Hoin, would you like to, uh, take, address that just briefly, or?
Well, if, if it's a change in the ordinance, it has to go through the ordinance change process.
Which is?
Uh, well, if, if, you know, in, in, boy, I wish I had the city attorney, uh, be here tonight, but I'm sure he's glad he's not, uh, because this came at the end.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. But, but my belief, and I'll look into it some more, my belief is it goes through the ordinance change process. Of course, if it's something that is, uh, impacts the planning commission, that org, that proposed ordinance would come through you and you would debate it and, and give input, of course. And then, of course, the ordinance, any ordinance change would have to go through the council then, if, you know, that's the next step, and go through the reading process, things like that. And that's for the, the codified, um, regulations that the city has.
Okay.
Vice Chairman Hayworth?
Go, go ahead, Mike Burger. Go ahead, you had it first.
Um, I, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Mrs. Lauderdale and Mr. Lauderdale are probably still online, and if they're listening to this, they might be shaking in their shoes that we're trying to, uh, change ordinance application. No, 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 I, I know what you're not trying to, but from their perspective, they might perceive that.
Right.
This is just conversation. I think we ought to try to put them at bay if we can, that that's not what we're trying to do, unless I'm speaking out of turn.
Uh, that, we appreciate your sensitivity to the entire audience, public included, and I, I, I believe that, so, you know, all of our discussions are, uh, proactive and, uh, beneficial to, uh, both applicants, potential remodelers and, and the public, all, all parties considered, all members of the community, so. Vice Chairman Hayworth?
Not to prolong this, but Karen might be able to have some input on this too, but that square footage, um, part of the ordinance was updated in the last few years.
Hmm, okay. Yeah, it was. You had an ad hoc committee. I remember Frank LaCito was on it. Um, to, uh, to, um, avoid the need for variances for any kind of addition. Lot coverage, the maximum lot coverage was brought up, and that's part of the new ordinance, the new building requirements.
Thank you.
That's it.
Okay. Well, everyone had their fill. Uh, any other comments? Looks like we finished it up, and, uh, that will conclude, uh, tonight's meeting. Uh, meeting adjourned. See you all next time around.
Thank you, everybody. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Night.
Good job, Jeremy.
Thank you, Karen. You as well. Thank you.
I'll second that.